Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At seven o'clock, we are going to begin the city council meeting. And I ask those who are present to please stand and join us in this pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll.
Gregor.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Chesnick.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Pointner.
Here.
Willis.
Present.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the Plymouth Forum. Individuals may address the council about any item not contained on the regular agenda. The maximum of fifteen minutes is allotted for the forum. If the full fifteen minutes are not needed for the forum, the city council will continue on with its agenda. The city council will take no official action on items discussed at the forum with the exception of a referral to staff or a commission or a committee for future report. With that, we have several, we have five cards for folks who would like to speak at the Plymouth Forum. This is Eric Van Milton, 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 twenty-six, fifty-six, twenty-one Elliott Avenue. Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you, city council. Thank you, staff. My given name is Eric, and family name is Van Mecklen, live down in Minneapolis, which I share Hennebun County with you, obviously. And in interest of time, I'll save my background. I want to talk to you about three numbers tonight. The first number is the number zero. Zero out of twenty-three precincts were included from Plymouth in the 2020 post-election review for Hennebun County. Zero out of twenty-three. The same thing happened in 2022. Zero out of twenty-three of your precincts were included in that post-election review hand count. The second number I have for you is seventy-five percent. That's roughly, in 2020, the number of absentee or mail-in ballots that came from this city, thirty-eight thousand out of fifty-one thousand total. The third number I have for you is seven hundred thousand. Seven hundred thousand out of one point nine million absentee mail-in ballots at the state level, according to the Secretary of State's data in 2020, were missing twenty-five days after the election and five days after the Minnesota State Canvassing Board certified our election. What do I mean by missing? There were more absentee votes in the certified official totals than were synced up with the statewide voter registration system at that time. Not required by state statute, amazingly to me. So according to the Secretary of State's office, that was cleaned up, cleared up after that point. I'm someone who believes that electronics and mail-in ballots, a number of countries have banned both of those, have nothing to do with our elections. However, we currently have mandates for electronic voting machines. The Ninety-third Legislature established that. And the ballot image portion of the cast vote record has also been made non-public in the Ninety-third Legislature. Hand counting immediately after the polls close has also now been banned by the Ninety-fourth Legislature here in 2024. That's where the post-election review becomes very interesting. By statute, only three percent, as a minimum, of precincts within each county are chosen by random lot for that post-election review hand count. As I said, zero out of twenty-three in Plymouth in both 2020 and 2023. But that's the minimum standard. So the opportunity that's available for you as a council, and this deserves a greater, longer discussion, a workshop, possibly, a presentation, if you're interested in this topic, is to say, we want more of our precincts to be included, more than zero, going forward. What would that look like? I have an informational packet to share with you, which gives you a bit of how you could go through that. There are two cities, one in Oak Grove, the city of Ramsey in Anoka County. They've already decided to do this, in one case, four out of four precincts, in another case, six out of nine of their precincts. And they want to not only do the top three races, but go down the ballot to look at those races that otherwise would not be audited. So I want to leave you with that. I've studied this for about three thousand hours over the last three years, tabling considerable income to study this, and ran for Secretary of State on this issue. Hundred and ten thousand votes, no political donations, thirty-six point nine percent of the vote shows a lot of people care about this, and I think a lot of people in Plymouth do as well. Tom, my friend, one of the speakers, will give you a bit more information as well on this topic. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
May I hand these out at this moment?
Yes. Would you just hand up to the city clerk here?
For sure.
And Tom, you're next. Apparently you have the same issue you wish to talk about, the post-election.
Yeah, that's correct. Tom Cleland in support of an expanded post-election review. As you may know, we already have a post-election review conducted by the county, but it only checks a few precincts. A city expanded post-election review conducted by the city allows you to check more precincts and see for yourself. Depending on your budget, it'd be nice to see president, senator, and state rep. I'm going out on a limb here, but this is your chance to prove that we're crazy. So one concern I have, however, is chain of custody. I know that the ballots go into that white cardboard box, and that's sealed and signed by the election judges, but it would be good to have assurances, bipartisan observer assurances that, you know, the ballots are secured until the time that they're counted. And yeah, it's an honor to have Eric Van Mecklen here from Midwest Seeds. And yeah, as he mentioned, yeah, he's got a lot of information, and we're reachable by email. Thank you, Clark Gregor and Catherine Chesnick for getting back to us already. And yeah, and he's got a wealth of information, and what a great cause, and I think your constituents are gonna love it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Next is Jason Kennedy, seventeen-two-oh-five Twenty-Fourth Avenue. Mr. Kennedy.
Hello, everyone, homo sapiens, fellow humans. So I own a property, and let me tell you a little bit about myself. I went to the University of Minnesota for landscape architecture, started in eighty-three, lasted two years, dabbled around for a couple more years, ended up coming out with math. But I've always loved, I worked at Medtronic and did electronics, but I always loved the earth and loved gardening and landscaping. So I also CCX, welcome to the people, you know, who I know who are taping this, and I work over there on a regular basis, and trying to produce something over there. I did a show called Earth Day Every Day, and I did it right in my Plymouth lawn there, and it was great. And so what I'm regarding today is I got a notice because I decided not to cut my lawn because I like the way it looks. So it kind of grows up, and it grows seeds, and I pulled all the dandelions, and I pulled all the cockleberries and all this stuff that would be bad for us, but it just kind of falls down, and now it's just gonna kind of reseed, but it looks like squirrels, and it's kind of a cool thing. And along with this comes habitat called honeybees and little turtles. A turtle high-fived me at my front door the other day, which was nice, you know. Anyways, so I back up to a wetland, and I, my original idea when I came twenty years ago was I was gonna just grass it in, because I kind of like the grass thing. But now I'm questioning, because eighty percent of our food is honeybees, and they're very important to us. And the more that we build houses, the less habitat we have for these. And when we cut down the lawns, the bees don't want to be there. That's a sign that that's not a safe place. So another thing is butterflies. We like them. I have a lot of milk plant on my property. If I keep cutting it down, it never grows. Okay, so I've got this beautiful lawn, and I've spent a lot of time, each and every tree, as I recovered from a brain injury, I was at a skateboarding thing, I hit my head, I planted a lot of trees, and it was kind of my therapy. And so all these three trees, they know my steps, they know my roots. So I'm asking an exception to be made by the lawn policy of maybe we study that it's okay to have long grass if it looks good, and maybe we could just kind of make an exception for now, and I could give you a fifteen-minute kind of presentation about why this might be a good idea, might be in our best interest as humans, and be progressive as a city, have this kind of idea that we are part of other subsystems that create our food, and we all like to eat. So that's what I'd like, is just kind of an exception, and I'd like to meet back, and that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, is that Dee Solzar, fourteen-fifteen Merrimack Lane, Plymouth?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Dee Solars. I live at four-one-five Merrimack, an old neighborhood in Plymouth off of one-on-one and twelve. I hope you all are having a great summer, and I would like to invite you to my backyard to have a great summer, but you'll have to bring your own lawn chair, your own umbrella, and your own helmet. We have aggressive hawks. July tenth, I was attacked on the back of my head, broke skin, blood. I have a spine problem. He came from behind enough to push me forward. This, I find out, is not a new problem. I, of course, warned my neighbors through the internet or the email, and they did reply that this has been, some of the older neighbors say that it's been going on for twelve to fifteen years. Some neighbor right next to me, she was attacked last year. Two neighbors down, a gentleman, his wife, a senior citizen, was attacked, in which she needed health care, and it took him a month of research to find out what is the proper people and departments to get something done and have the hawk removed. And then I went down that path. I've been told I'm a senior citizen, and I would like to protect myself, and that shouldn't matter. As far as I know, no children yet have been attacked to carry this forward, to be traumatized with for the rest of their life. It is just stunning, especially when you have two-inch gashes on the back of your head and you're bleeding. And Lord knows what organism I've been exposed to, because they have dead animals in those claws. So going forward, I thought I'd do the prudent thing and research and take care of it like you should, right? Well, four hours of one morning, I called every number that I was referred to dead-end, from state DNR to federal, back to state, and there are different departments that have departments within departments, then the federal. So let's go to the local level. I called the city, just to protect the citizens. The lady did call me back, and what happened? I got referred to the DNR, starting all over again. This was so frustrating, and I spent another three hours. So I spend my day, July tenth, oh, and my husband has, not a pitchfork, but he has a rake to help protect me. The next day after I was attacked, it came frontal view to my face. It looked like a torpedo with wings, and there I thought, there goes my eyes. It was horrible. And it's a protected animal, so you can't do anything to solve the problem permanently, say no more. They've been protected since nineteen-seventy-two, I do believe, these broad-wing eagles, eagles, or hawks, excuse me. So might it be reassessed as to maybe they shouldn't be protected anymore? And I also want to say that the city's progress of development is contributing to the problem because of all the countryside and the full-grown trees that are being removed, for example, up by Rush Creek. All that, that's where hawks live. So what happens, the new developments have these small trees, the old neighborhoods have the bigger trees, and now it seems like we're getting more of them, because this does not solve the problem for me when someone says they need a place to live too. That does not solve the problem. And yes, I do agree, but it's gotta be within balance of everyone else. So to get my premise, after maybe seven hours of calling, I finally did a shot in the dark and called the field officer of Minnetonka, Brent. He came out, he looked at the situation, he was also at a dead end, what he can and cannot do. So he called somebody else. I can't remember all the names and the departments and such. That individual gave some real attention to it, moved me on to someone else, and I got a call. I didn't have to call. I got a call about the problem and what I could do. So what I could do is fill out a form, another form, okay? So then we move it on. So then I called another department, and a Mr. Schumacher with a wildlife, I can't remember, the Birds and Wildlife Department or something, he was able to walk me through the complexity. I knew there was bureaucracy, but this is nuts. This is absolutely nuts. And so going back to the local level, here I am today at the local level, trying to pull in you to take an active role on managing this aggressive hawk situation and any aggressive animals that we have to live amongst us. And what I'm kind of hearing you maybe thinking that it's a state problem, it's a federal problem, it's gotta be in the past that when you have a local issue, you create relationships that you can cross boundaries. And so I want my city to protect its citizens from animals that are aggressive by creating a relationship that they have a protocol or a policy or a plan in place, that when someone calls that they've been actually attacked or at least swooped upon, and they were able to avoid it, that that person will call me or the citizen, and they will activate whatever needs to be done. This has been going on since July tenth. If you want to come to my backyard for a barbecue, like I said, you're welcome. I got a backyard pool. It's really hard to swim like this, but you can try. Go ahead. And it's hard to pull weeds and keep your yard up. You can walk your dog, but bring your equipment, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lastly, we have Mr. Sacks, six-twelve, no, sixteen-nine-thirty-five Forty-Fifth.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everybody. I live on two houses from Holly Lane on Forty-Fifth, right near the, was the former Hollydale Golf Course. Here, my neighbors and I would have some traffic concerns that I'd like to share with you. A year ago, I sent an email to the mayor and several council members, and I never heard anything back, so I thought I'd come here in person. And what I'm looking for is somebody later on who can work with me on addressing some of these issues. Again, I kind of am representing my neighbors rather than have us all come out here. So I have three traffic-related things. The first one is the speed on Holly Lane from Old Rockford on north. It's posted at thirty miles an hour. There's a lot of speeding on that stretch of the road, and my wife and I take walks on there. A lot of people are going forty-plus. We have a lot of construction trucks that just whip down that road. I've lived in that house for thirty years. I've never seen anybody, I've never seen speed control being done by the police. It probably has, but I've never seen it. And so I'm just wondering, you know, so my first issue is just what can be done about that? Can it maybe be posted for twenty-five? Can there be some enforcement? So that's the first one. The second one is, there's a lot of cut-through traffic from people that are coming through the Gulfview neighborhood and going north on Holly, either to their residences, or a lot of them are construction workers, and we've had semis come through our neighborhood and make the right turn onto Holly. This is not related to the current utility project on Old Rockford. It's been an ongoing thing. We have eight children on, like a block from me, that are kindergarten age or less. We shouldn't have people whipping through the neighborhood, rolling through the stop sign to go north on Holly. The road wasn't designed for that. So my second question is, if somebody can help me try to figure out what can be done to mitigate that, I'd appreciate it. And the last issue I have is jake braking. It's been a problem. You can hear it from Highway fifty-five when the wind is blowing right, but recently with the construction on the former Hollydale Golf Course, a lot of the construction trucks are jake braking right in our neighborhood, right at Holly and Old Rockford. Just the other day at five-thirty a.m., I heard some guy coming in jake braking. It just woke us up. A few years ago, I was in touch with Mike Goldstein, the former police chief, and he said, yeah, it is a problem. We do need to probably get some more signs up in Plymouth. We're working with MnDOT to do that, especially on Highway fifty-five. That was about seven, eight years ago. I haven't seen any new signs, and I was just wondering if somebody could please take a look into that and see what could be done to mitigate the jake braking. If somebody could get back to me on it, I'm not gonna send another email, but my email's on the blue card, my phone number's on the blue card. If somebody wants to work with me, I can kind of represent my side of the neighborhood on that, and I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Is anyone else who was here for the Plymouth Forum and did not fill out a card? Then we'll move forward with our council agenda, presentations, and public informations announcements. One is to accept a donation from the Wayzata Youth Hockey Association for Plymouth Ice Center AED purchases. Park Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the, actually, you guys talked about what to call you earlier today, and I forgot what your preference was. We'll just call you Mr. Mayor.
Council member's fine.
Okay, council member. We have Greg from the Wayzata Youth Hockey Association, who's gonna be doing a presentation on a recent donation that they made for the purchase of a new AED device over at the Plymouth Ice Center. So with that, Eric, I'll have you and Greg come up.
Good evening, council. My name's Eric Calverson. I'm the manager of the Plymouth Ice Center. Today, we've got Greg Gibson from the Wayzata Youth Hockey Association, a former past president. The Plymouth Ice Center has two AEDs in our facility that have expired this year, so we are looking to purchase two new AEDs. And we partnered with NHL Alumni Association many years ago, and they are no longer around. So we reached out to Wayzata Youth Hockey, and they happily would like to donate funds for us to purchase those two new AEDs.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mr. Mayor's not here, Mr. Willis. Wayzata Youth Hockey, Eric reached out to us. I just, first, I want to tell you what a pleasure it is to work with Eric as the Plymouth Ice Center manager. We, you, are very fortunate to have Eric in that position. He does a wonderful job. And our park and rec director, Jennifer, have both reached out quite a bit. So Wayzata Youth Hockey is always happy to contribute things to the Ice Center that makes it a better place, and, you know, when you're on that side that might need the AED by age, it's really nice to have them there, and I think we'll work on some training programs for Wayzata Youth Hockey membership that's there a lot, so that people besides staff know how to use the equipment. Eric mentioned to me when we got here that there were three cardiac events in Minnesota ice arenas last year where, due to the AEDs being there, or at least assisting, all three survived the incident. Fortunately, none of those were at our Plymouth facility, but it could happen. So we're very happy to contribute this money and look forward to the further development of the Plymouth Ice Center as City Center 2.0, and I certainly would like to come back with bigger checks and bigger amounts, and maybe some stinky hockey players that want to play hockey, but this falls right around the corner. Hockey season will be here, and we do have some big events this year that Wayzata Youth Hockey, besides the five invitational tournaments. One is which is junior gold A that I do. I have six teams from out of state, two from California, three from Illinois, one from South Dakota. I could make it a much larger tournament if I had more ice and more arenas to do it with. I have a long waiting list of out-of-state teams that would love to come to Plymouth and play. And Wayzata Hockey received the bid to host the Bantam Bee and State Bee, Peewee State tournaments this year in March at the Plymouth Ice Center. So there'll be sixteen teams participating in two state tournaments at the Plymouth Ice Center. So once again, thank you for everything you do for Wayzata Youth Hockey slash District 284 Youth Hockey, and thank you to Eric for bringing things like this forward that we can be part of the success of the Plymouth Ice.
Well, thanks to you and the Hockey Association for the generous donation.
Well, it's a good cause. Hopefully, we won't need to use them, but they're there, so.
Oh, I'll take it.
I know you.
I didn't want you to walk out the door.
I was believing, I was checking.
I know, but thank you so much. We appreciate the generosity. There is attached to this particular presentation a resolution, and I'm gonna take liberties as mayor, to move that to item six-twelve in the consent agenda, which is up next. Okay, nextly, we are going to approve the city council's agenda. These items are considered to be routine, and, no, excuse me, we're gonna approve the agenda. Council members may add items to the agenda, including items contained in the council information memorandum, for discussion purposes or staff direction only. The council will not normally take official action on items added to the agenda. Does any member of the council have something to add to the current city council agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed to accept the motion to approve the agenda. It has to be by roll call vote.
Motion to approve?
And second?
Gregor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Julie?
Aye.
Chesnick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Pointner?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye. The motion is adopted. Just again, announcing to the audience here is that we have to have this roll call pursuant to state law, because two of our council members are absent from being present in these facilities that are, as you can see, electronically connected to us. The next item is the considered to be a routine, these are the consent items, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. In the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and placed elsewhere on the agenda. As I've noted earlier, item that was discussed under item four-point-one, the donation from the Wayzata Youth Hockey Association, the resolution accepting that donation will be moved to item six-point-one-two of the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have anything to add or to remove from the consent agenda? Remotely, nothing? Anyone in the audience have something they would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Motion's moved and seconded. The clerk will call the roll.
Gregor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Chesnick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Pointner?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye. Moving forward, public hearings. We have tonight the nineteen-twenty-three, correction, two thousand twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and we have with us tonight Aaron Nielsen from our city auditors, as well as we have our city finance director here to answer questions subsequent to his presentation. And do you want to make an introduction?
Just a few words, Councilmember Willis in council, today is a great day. Our auditor is here, but what that means for us is, I mean, the auditors have put in a lot of time, everybody here at the city, the finance department, and other departments to conclude this audit, but it's a great day because it's the end of 2023. So I'm really happy that Aaron is here tonight with us.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, so to help keep the limelight off me, and we've got a PowerPoint presentation that will focus So to help keep the limelight off me, and we've got a PowerPoint presentation that we'll focus on. I understand you have been presented the results of the financial activities in the past. So I just have a short presentation to go through pretty quickly, just to make it official that we have completed our work as well. So you have received three documents, the acronym ACFAR Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the special purpose reports, and our management report. So with that, we're pleased to go through the results of our audit for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. We start with our role as independent auditors of the city. We have a role to issue an opinion on the financial statements for the city's audit, as well as for the schedule of expenditures of federal awards that you're required here at the city of Plymouth. We've also issued our reports on internal controls and compliance with regard to the financial statement audit, as well as a separate federal single audit, and then the Office of the State Auditors Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit. So with that, I'll get right to our results. So this past year for the city's financial audit, we have issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on your basic financial statements. So, meaning that they're fairly presented as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and for the year then ended, the results of the financial activities for this past year. The city has implemented the required standards. There was a new GASB standard implemented this year with subscription-based information technology arrangements, or known as SABITAS. And so we were able to implement that along with the city staff to make sure you continue to be in compliance with the audit requirements. With regard to the internal control and compliance for the financial statement audit, we're pleased to report again, I believe, similar results as the past year. No material weaknesses and no instances of noncompliance with our testing for this past year. And then to continue the good news with our next slide, with regard to the separate single audit of your federal awards, we have issued also a clean opinion on that SIFAR, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And again, no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance with the major program that was tested this past year. And then finally, the last component here is that Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit. So there's seven broad categories that we test that are applicable for your city. Many tests within sight of that that we complete and questions that are answered and inquired of. And pleased to report, we had no findings again to report with that. And I have just a couple more slides to share with you. I guess I didn't get ahead there. But to share with you your general fund, the financial position and trend analysis for your city's primary operating fund. So your general fund this past year. This slide provides you the annual total fund balance, or the equity of that fund, the cash balance, and then the annual expenditures of the general fund, to show you that change in financial position or the size of the operation for your city. And as you can see, it has had a very stable position. I'm sure it would look the same way if we stretched it out ten years, going back that far. And I really attribute a lot to that, to the, also to your fund balance policy that the city has maintained for many years. So the strong budgetary controls in place have allowed you then to maintain that fund balance level to, you know, provide you enough resources to get through the first half of the following fiscal year. And I think my last slide here, just some closing comments, I really already touched upon this. For your general fund, as you can see, the primary operating fund, you've continued again to meet that fund balance policy goal as of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. And then just a couple of comments on ACFAR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. You can see, we've noted here, it's in the front of your financial statement as well. The city has continued to receive GFOA, or the Government Financial Officers Association's, award for your financial statements for the past forty-one years. This report has been prepared to allow you to submit for that award again. So we're confident that you will continue to receive that award. And then the last comment there, well, as I shared with you, that you've continued to prepare it in that manner to be allowed to submit for that award. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any further questions. There's a lot of information in that annual comprehensive report, financial, as well as some non-financial information. But it seems to continue to grow with more standards and GASB requirements, so.
Well, I'm not going to speak directly to the report itself, but it's the trend of these reports, as you pointed out, forty-one years getting the GFOAs award. It indicates that the city staff is truly committed to doing an exemplary job of managing the city's affairs. And I think that's credit to our city manager and the finance director and the staff. Every city, in my experience, has at some point in time bumps in the road on their finances for one reason or another. I've been affiliated with the city long enough to know that that really has not been a problem. And I'm very appreciative of the work of the city staff in working on this, and certainly for the comments that you and your firm has made with respect to the way the city staff keeps our records and books totally within the requirements of state and federal law in every particular. And I think that's a credit to the staff. So I don't have any further questions myself, but any member of the council have comments they'd like to offer at this time? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you for this report. Especially when I was reading two hundred and forty-eight pages, the pages that are intentionally left blank were nice to get through that a little quicker. I did just, as, for clarification and for just a little general education, your slide with the chart showing the fund balance and the cash balance and the expenditures. Can you help explain that to me? I know the fund balance is what we want to maintain because we only get our money from state and taxes and so on twice a year. Is the cash balance sort of what we actually had, and the fund balance is what we need to have as a minimum? Is that how that, what this chart is showing?
The equity is a good measure because it shows you the amount of that net position, or the fund balance, or the equity of the organization. So it's a good tool that you can use on a consistent basis from year to year. So that's what we see cities use as the measuring gauge. And as you mentioned, I didn't follow through with the full statement. The reason why you need that amount of resources is so you can operate the first half of the year because of the delay in tax payments and state aid payments when they would come to you, and to provide resources so you don't have to borrow to cover those operations along the way. The cash balance, we simply use as a measure because it's an important tool if you were to see fluctuations. And they, what we watch for there is the differences really accounts payable, timing of payables, or you may have deposits, big deposits that are provided to the city that would not provide equity for you. So if you're having, or, for instance, your cash may be down because you're waiting for resources from organizations, and then you need to borrow to cover it. But this shows that you have got a solid basis that you're not needing to borrow for those resources. Your equity really is really pretty liquid within the general fund because it's in a cash format.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Willis. I just wanted to chime in, and I think sometimes it's easy to, especially given our long track record of having clean and unmodified opinions and reports out of our audits, but sometimes in those cases, it's easy to check the box and glance over the report and move on. But it shouldn't be overlooked how important it is that we continue to have these results. So I just wanted to comment on how that's, it is good news that shouldn't be overlooked. And so I wanted to, you know, offer my commendation to all those who've been involved in another good report. You know, I've reviewed the materials, and oftentimes I feel like sometimes audits are looking for what isn't going well, and then identifying that. But given your experience and given our track record, I would love for you, based on your experience, to kind of give us your perspective on maybe where our strongest points are, what we're really, really doing right, if you wouldn't mind offering your insight on that.
Sure, I'll do my best from a financial statement standpoint, because that would be the area I focus on. But a couple of thoughts, I appreciate the heads up with the question and the comment. So I was able to give a little thought, but I did want to share, you know, I think some of the comments that have always been brought up, the tone from the top of the organization. And starting with the council, they've been supportive of the ACFAR report for many years, the tone from the top from the city manager, and then all your supervisory staff. Our audit process is, you know, goes well beyond the finance staff as well, and everybody is made available to us. So I appreciate that. And you walk into an organization, you can tell pretty quickly how well things are operating and if there are challenges. A couple of other comments that I would share with you. I believe the city has always been open to audit suggestions when we, you know, asking for what are improvements we could make. And, you know, we, you know, the city's been fortunate and worked very hard not to have findings, but, you know, occasionally it'll happen, you know, timely payments and that kind of thing. And they take it in stride and are always looking for how do we improve. And we have yet to come back and have the finding a second year, so the changes aren't made and accepted with regard to that. A couple of other things I noted, systems, the city has a lot of systems in place, which are important because especially, you know, what we're seeing more with our governments that we work with is turnover. And, you know, where staff isn't with the organization as long, so you lose some of that institutional knowledge. But the systems you've had in place have worked really well to allow people to come and step in. And you've continued to attract strong candidates, I believe, too, in those positions. So a lot of good things there. And again, probably more so from my standpoint, is those budgetary controls that you've had. That, you know, as Councilmember Willis mentioned, it's a pleasure to come do your meeting when I get to say, you know, you've met your fund balance policy and, you know, your budgetary controls. They've come in under budget, your revenues, your positions on that. So just a couple of comments that I think really off the top of my head this afternoon that I came up with.
Great, that's excellent. I appreciate it. I have a follow-up question, if I may. And this is just to kind of underscore for general awareness of anybody who wasn't really directly involved in conducting the audit, whether on the auditor's side or the staff's side, because there's always a heavy lift on the staff's side, too, to facilitate the process. So if you, do you have an estimate of how many hours your company spends undertaking the audit? And then to whomever the appropriate staff member is, how many hours would you estimate roughly? And I don't need precision or documents, just roughly would ballpark. How much time goes into, you know, conducting these audits?
Sure. So for the city of Plymouth, I look back for several years here, and I think in average, for about the last four to five years, we were looking at about six hundred hours of our audit staff time, you know, or about fifteen weeks. So giving kind of some scope of what that entails, we do, the prelim audit work starts in July. We come out shortly after year end, spend a few days just getting to know the organization again, asking questions. We rotate our staff so that new people are looking at the information and getting that fresh set of eyes. Your staff has had turnover, so then there's also a new look on your end as well. So that's when the process begins, then we go back and we continue our planning process remotely. The large brunt of the work happens probably in May and April, May timeframe. We come out for two solid weeks with anywhere from three to five people over that time period. And then we leave and we start drafting the report and follow up with questions with regard to that process. So we're really aiming for early June to be done with it so that we can get everything wrapped up and the staff aren't scrambling on the last day of the year to get everything issued. So I'll let the staff speak to their end. I'm sure it's an annual ongoing process throughout the year, but there definitely is a heavy lift after year end.
Yeah, I can speak to the finance department's side of this. And oddly enough, when I put some thought behind this today, I came up with a very close number to yours. I think probably if I had one person working full-time for about fifteen weeks is what it would take. And much of that, we say, is audit, we say it's audit prep, but we, some of it, we would just be doing anyway because it's just the process of closing out year end. But it is a heavy lift, and obviously, here we are in July, and we are, it is the end of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you both. I appreciate it. I hope that, for anyone who wasn't aware, how much time and effort goes into conducting this, that kind of shined a spotlight on it for you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are other questions right now, I'm...
I was just going to say, Mayor, I hope that the finance team gets like, you know, New Year's, you know, hats or blazers or something like that. We appreciate the work that everybody has done.
Following the report, I'm going to open the public hearing on the nineteen, or the correction, two thousand twenty-three audit report. It's a public hearing in order to accept the report. If there are people here who would like to comment on the report, the city's financial report for nineteen, or two thousand twenty-three, I'd be pleased to hear them at this time, because the public hearing is open. Is there one here who wishes to speak at the public hearing? No one appearing to speak. The hearing is hereby closed. Other council members have any further questions of the staff or the auditor this time before taking action to adopt a resolution accepting the report? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
Acting Mayor?
Who, which, which Julie? Julie, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
Hi, I just wanted to say that, I think it's so important to point out, as the argument said, how the hard work that has gone on from the city staff, the auditor, and also the importance that this shows from our city, and that the residents should be really proud of and understand the responsibility that we take with the funds that we work with. And I just, I just really can't say thank you enough. And I hope that everybody gets a chance to read this, and thank you.
Thank you.
I can make a motion if I'm allowed to do it this far.
You may, you may.
So I need to make a motion, accepting the two thousand twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit.
Is there a second to the motion?
All second. Oh.
Motion's been made, and it's second. All those in favor, excuse me, roll call.
Gregor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Chesnick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Pointner?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Again, thank you to the auditor, thank you to the staff, city manager for this report. I think just again perpetuates the progress that continues to be made in our fiscal operations, which in effect, the management and the operations of all our city operations. So it's really neat. Moving then on with the agenda. Item seven point two is a public hearing on the vacation of a sanitary sewer easement at thirteen zero zero one County Road ten. This is the new development of the former Prudential site. Please take over. You got it.
All right, Acting Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Tonight, we are considering a sanitary sewer easement vacation requested by Skeneal Properties for thirteen zero zero one County Road ten, which is more commonly known as the Boulevard Development, otherwise known as the former Prudential site. They are requesting this vacation in conjunction with the final plat approval. That will happen the next item in this meeting. This vacation consideration and public hearing is conditioned on the acceptable sanitary sewer installation of the new sewer and the recording of the plat, which will include the easement for the new sewer. As is customary, the city has notified utility companies and area residents, and we have received no objections from them, as well as city staff has no objections. Looking at what's being considered graphically, the yellow line that bisects the property at the former Prudential site is the existing sanitary sewer that is currently in service for the city underneath an existing easement. The developer is asking to install a proposed sanitary sewer along the green line that runs along Chancada and then north in a different alignment to serve the residents both west of four ninety-four, as well as the proposed development at the Boulevard site. Again, it's important to keep in mind that from a procedural standpoint, the public open house, or the public hearing can be held, and it does have a requirement on it that if the final plat is not recorded, this vacation does not go through.
That's correct. And the resolution on the public hearing vacation will be taken out now. But as he says, the action to finalize the order, the revised easement relies upon the necessity to have the developer and the city execute the development contract, and that's next on our agenda. Does the council members have any questions or comments with respect to this item? Is there anyone here in the public who has a question? Oh, excuse me, councilmember Nelson? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson?
I have a question. Just, who determines whether they, you know, the sanitary sewer, when an acceptable sanitary sewer is, you know, in place or determined?
Good question. Our engineering department will inspect the installation of that sewer and determine if it is acceptable.
Is that it? Any member, Councilmember Chesnick?
And will, and there will be a new easement placed on the new sewer line?
Absolutely, yes. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the council chambers who would like to speak to the subject before us, the vacation of the easement? None appearing, I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, we have...
Mayor, I have one question. Reading through somewhere in my packet, you know, hundreds of pages, I feel like I read something about 494. Is this affecting anything going under 494, or is it just on this property?
Good question, councilmembers. No, it does not affect anything underneath 494. As a side note, there is a separate city project that is rehabilitating the pipe that does go underneath 494. In conjunction with this project, it does not interfere with either the proposed plans for the Boulevard or the final plat considerations.
Okay, thank you. And then, yeah, whenever I see vacation, I just wonder where the easement is going, you know, stuck in airports or something. With that, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the resolution vacating the sanitary sewer easement at the Boulevard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing the second on the motion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Gregor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Chesnick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Poynter?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye. Is adopted. We've gone, item 8.1 on our agenda is approve the final plat and development contract for the Boulevard for property located at 13001 County Road 10. SPRC Land Ventures Limited, or, yeah, Limited Liability Corporation. Mr. Drill?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. Final plats are typically consent items, but due to the scope of this project and the sequencing with the easement vacation that you just considered, this one was placed under general business. I'm going to give a very brief presentation and then open it up for any questions. SPRC Land Ventures is requesting a final plat for the 75-acre former Prudential Insurance Site located at the southeast corner of I-494 and Bass Lake Road. The 450,000-square-foot office building is currently, or almost removed from the site, and site grading operations are currently underway. The PUD plan was approved by the city council in March, and planned uses include a grocery store up in this location, coffee shop. This would be an office building, and Summit Orthopedics would be the tenant in that space, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then to the south, these blue areas are the MedTech Business Park. Up along the county road, there would be some general commercial retail. These two buildings would be waterfront restaurants and retail. And then the four buildings that you see with the lighter shading would be apartment buildings totaling 925 dwelling units. And then last but not least, is the Central Park feature in the middle of the site, that's about 13 and a quarter acres. Here's the actual final plat showing all 18 lots, including the lot, or the park lot to be dedicated, and that's again in the central portion of the site. The related development contract would address installation of the public streets and utilities within the development. And then lastly, just to refresh your memory, here are renderings of the Summit Orthopedics Building, which would be the first lot developed within the site, and construction is anticipated to start very soon pending your plat approval this evening. And with that, I can stand for any questions you have of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Drill. Any members of the council have any questions? Remotely? No questions? Okay, Councilmember Gregor?
My question is purely educational, but I'm looking at all these plat diagrams and so on, and I was thinking about, you know, how this gets recorded with the county and so on, and property lines have, you know, what are they, like metal medallions in the corner and that kind of thing? Is that still happening, and are those the little circles on this map? Like, and how does that happen to officially pinpoint, you know, each corner of a lot or a block when you plat something?
Good question, Mayor and councilmembers. So what will happen is this plat would be recorded at Hennepin County, and then the surveyor that is, was hired by the developer will be required to go out and place iron monuments at all of the lot corners and lot bends, and following this plan. And then once they do that, they certify to the city that that work has been done. Our city staff goes out and inspects and makes sure that they're there, and the process is completed.
So an iron monument is just like a piece of metal in the ground?
It's essentially like a pipe, yeah, that gets pounded into the ground.
Thank you.
But each site has a legal description that it follows the survey. Any other questions? No questions? If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion of a resolution approving the plat. Excuse me?
I can make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion to approve the final plat and development contract for the Boulevard for property located at 13001 County Road 10.
Motion's been introduced by Councilmember Poynter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gregor. Any further discussion on the motion? Council, or the clerk, please call the roll.
Gregor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Chesnick?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Poynter?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye. The motion is adopted. I have nothing else before us on our council agenda, and so the, I want to thank the council members, Poynter and Peterson, for bearing with us and being present tonight by computers and Zoom, but it allows us to serve the public and have the public's business done that we couldn't have had done if you hadn't been here present, so thank you. And with that, the meeting is hereby adjourned.